One veterinarian, Dr. Randhava, and a support staff of three employees initially. It does not anticipate a peak time in terms of clients. Like I mentioned, it'll be evenly staggered throughout the business day, and it will use 100% of the property for animal hospital purposes, and I'll get into a site plan a[569.73-571.10][S17] little bit later.[571.10-578.02][S17] And no overnight boarding services, and it will not dedicate any outdoor space for[578.02-583.67][S17] pet play or exercise because none of the pets will be staying overnight.[583.67-590.73][S17] Nowadays, the reasonable standard for veterinarians is that unless you have someone staying[591.14-597.10][S17] in the hospital overnight, you should not have a pet there overnight by itself.[597.10-600.91][S17] That's changed over the past, I would say, about 15, 20 years.[600.91-605.02][S17] Back in the 80s and 90s, pets would stay overnight without anyone inside the animal[605.02-607.41][S17] hospital, but now that's a changed practice.[610.29-615.02][S17] Westgate will clean its property multiple times on a daily basis.[615.02-622.02][S17] Having done several of these, I understand one of the concerns is pets pooping outside[622.02-625.64][S17] of the business and causing a mess.[625.64-632.23][S17] And so now there are practices employed, implemented by animal hospitals where they[632.23-636.23][S17] have the green bags handy, and they send out their staff multiple times a day to make[636.23-637.95][S17] sure that the property is clean.[637.95-642.14][S17] That's good for the neighbors, but it's also good for the business owner, the veterinarian.[642.14-647.02][S17] You don't want the client who's coming for the first or second time to be dodging things[647.31-648.31][S17] on the floor.
No, you don't.[651.36-655.73][S17] Dr. Randhava, who's present tonight, is a seasoned veterinarian and operator of[655.86-659.86][S17] an animal hospital, having practiced veterinary medicine for 26 years.[659.86-663.86][S17] I'd like to invite him up to kind of share a little bit about his background and why[663.86-664.86][S17] he chose Bartlett.[664.86-665.86][S18] Yeah, I'm Dr. Randhava, working around this area from last 25 years, 26 years.[671.58-675.36][S18] I already own one practice in Elgin.[675.36-681.31][S18] We have four partners there, so I decided to open another one in this area so we can
help the community, the Bartlett community, and help rescues and Bartlett community.[691.73-692.73][S17] Thank you.[694.64-698.23][S17] The building size is approximately 2,000 square feet.[698.23-703.64][S17] It's part of a multi-unit shopping strip with ample parking spaces.[703.64-711.52][S17] Westgate will make no major alterations to the existing interior building or structure.[711.52-714.26][S17] It will operate on an appointment basis, as mentioned.[714.26-720.86][S17] And the impact that, I know there's a traffic concern, but it'll be minimal to the surrounding[720.86-727.17][S17] businesses and residences, like I mentioned, because it's be operating on an appointment[727.17-728.17][S17] basis only.[728.17-733.23][S17] It's a Google screenshot of the property, I'm sure a lot of you have driven past it[733.23-742.91][S17] before, but it is on the east side of this building with a neighbor just directly to[742.91-743.91][S17] the west.[743.91-747.64][S17] This is the site plan, and I know it'll be hard to see, but basically there are two[747.64-750.14][S17] floors to the property, to the unit.[750.14-758.02][S17] The first floor will have a reception, two exam rooms, a pharmacy, a employee break[758.02-766.86][S17] area, a surgery suite, and some cages just for the pets post-surgery.[766.86-768.45][S17] Again, no overnight.[768.45-778.10][S17] And then the second floor is going to be used as a doctor's library and personal space.[778.10-787.86][S17] And regarding the criteria for approving a special use, you know, the business is necessary[787.86-792.91][S17] and desirable, and it's in the interest of the public convenience in that animal hospitals[794.52-797.52][S17] are valued and treasured members of one's community.[797.52-800.64][S17] It's akin to a medical office or dental practice.[800.64-805.86][S17] It provides preventative and acute treatment to pets that are beloved members of one's[805.86-806.86][S17] family.[806.86-810.36][S17] And this development would benefit from such a business, which would certainly heed[810.36-813.73][S17] or obstruct any other business at this development.[813.73-820.36][S17] And it would be, it would not be detrimental to the health, safety, morals, or general[820.36-827.31][S17] welfare of the people residing or working in the vicinity, or prove to be injurious[827.31-829.10][S17] to any one of them.[829.10-833.45][S17] Pets are family members, sometimes the most beloved within the family.[833.45-838.23][S17] And I believe that the ability to add a qualified, educated, skilled, and passionate veterinarian[838.23-843.02][S17] to the Bartlett community, and specifically the neighboring residents to the development,[843.02-847.91][S17] will only enhance the village and the neighboring communities.[847.91-854.31][S17] And of course, any recommendations that the commission may have, you know, we will[854.31-857.73][S17] listen to those as well.[857.73-864.26][S17] And then lastly, I just wanted to point out that nowadays, animal hospitals are being[864.26-866.58][S17] purchased by big corporations.[866.58-872.73][S17] And sometimes it's hard to tell from the outside if it's a veterinarian-owned practice[872.73-874.76][S17] or if it's a corporate practice.[874.76-882.02][S17] And in my opinion, I think there's value in having a business owner who's on-site and[882.02-884.41][S17] who's also the veterinarian.[884.41-888.17][S17] They can work with the clients, they're not going to be hard, they're not going to stick[888.17-890.23][S17] to certain prices.[890.23-896.02][S17] And I think the community needs that versus, you know, a practice that has corporate[896.02-900.91][S17] overheads and budgets and things of that nature.[900.91-901.91][S17] I'm open to any questions.[903.23-905.73][S01] I'm impressed at how much things have changed.[905.73-912.52][S01] I've had five dogs in my lifetime, and I know that a couple times I had to have, it[912.52-916.76][S01] was an emergency situation where they had to spend the night at the vet's office.[916.76-922.91][S01] And I like the way things have changed with not having that happen unless somebody is[922.95-925.45][S01] in there with them.[925.45-931.45][S01] And also, the part about the appointments, I think that's a good thing, because I've[931.45-935.76][S01] been in situations where the waiting room was just filled, and then you get somebody[935.76-940.02][S01] that brings in a dog that's out of control and wants to challenge all the other smaller
Having the business owner on site, so he is the final decision maker in that regard.
Good. Any other questions?
Yeah, welcome to the neighborhood. I think we're all excited to see that, and this is a great presentation. I do want to just talk a little bit about the waste. So I know you talked about excrement and things like that, but while you're operating and doing things, there's bound to be radioactive waste, potentially syringes, potentially animal parts. I know there's a dumpster in the back. What's the plan for disposal of that?
Sharp containers there, whatever the waste, we put it there and monthly they pick it up.
So animal parts that might have disease or things like that, is that handled with special treatment?
Yeah, there is special containers for that.
Sealed. Okay, all right. Thank you.
So if no animals are staying overnight, the surgeries are day surgeries. So anything more extensive where the animal would have to be under observation, you wouldn't be doing those types of surgeries?
End of the day, we send to the emergency. We can transfer there with all the records and they stay there for the night.
Okay.
Anyone else? At this point, we shall open this up to the public. Does anyone in the audience have any comment? Any further discussion or motions?
Yeah, if I could say something, I don't take too much time.
Did you fill out a form?
No, I didn't.
Okay, just grab a form and then, or you can go ahead and speak and then...
He's actually affiliated with us. It's one of the staff members, the manager.
Yeah, so I won't, I won't take up too much time with everyone. I'm Eric Gannon, so I've worked with Dr. Rendawa for twelve and a half years now. So where we work, I helped him start a very small practice. Oh, sorry. I helped him start a small practice 12 years ago in Elgin. We were small. He was the only doctor. It was like three of us, so that was for 10 years. He recently sold three quarters of his practice about a year ago. Now we have four doctors. It's busy. It's, it's not corporate, but there's partners and it's, it's growing into something that we are not super happy in. So the whole point of this clinic is to be smaller again. It's not corporate. We don't have quotas. We're not charging people like a literal mortgage payment so that your dog or cat is not going to die. That's what's getting us right now. We want to do rescue work. We want to do low cost. You shouldn't have to spend like $2,000 because your dog has a, a foreign body or your cat has pyometra or growth surgery. We have people that are referred to like vet specialty Buffalo Grove and VCA, and they're quoted seven to $8,000. It's pretty upsetting. So most of these surgeries he can do. He does orthopedic surgeries, soft tissue surgeries, growth removals, bladder stones, pyometras, which is like infection and deadly for female dogs and cats that aren't fixed. We're also wanting to work with more rescues. The one thing that's frustrating right now is that all these big animal hospitals out here, all these non-for-profit 501s need vets. No one wants to see them because they have to offer it at a discounted rate. We're not going to do that. I'm with a not-for-profit in Chicago. I've been on the board for a long time. He has probably helped me save 200 cats at this point. Barely makes me pay half the time. If I can pay, great, with all of the rescue donations, so he is...
No charges.
Yeah, so I mean, we, we want to help the rescues in the community, senior discount, like military discounts and everything. So it's, it's, we just don't want people to go, to go broke. So corporate's a way different thing. They have a quota. You have to make a certain amount of money every, and all these vets around here have gone corporate. So that's why we wanted to go back to small, one doctor, few staff members and the barking thing, I mean, when we moved into our old, our new building right now, it's like, it's huge. It's what, 3,000 square feet or something? Forty-six hundred, yeah. The main concern of all of the neighbors there was noise, barking. Our neighbor is a chiropractor. His treatment room backs up to all of our, our kennels. So that was a huge thing. Not one, one thing has been said. If anything, they're louder, because all, all I hear all day is talking. So that's, yeah, the, the barking is, is not a big deal.
Mostly we keep the animals, we do the surgeries. After the surgery, they're under anesthesia and they're calm after that.
They're pretty drugged when they're waking up, obviously. It's, it's anesthesia, so we, we give them calming stuff. We don't want anyone to be stressed or, you know, so the, the barking is, is not a big thing. Just wanted to say that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any further discussion or motions?
I'll make a motion to send a positive recommendation to the board on 2414 Westgate Animal Care, based on the findings of fact and the information in the memo from staff.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. At this point, I shall close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved by Bob, seconded by John, to pass on a positive recommendation. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
John Miaso?
Yes.
Julie Kaputikakis?
Yes.
Amy McSwain?
Yes.
John Baderman?
Yes.
Bob Picaro?
Yes.
Mike Wearden?
Yes.
Okay, we shall pass on a positive recommendation to the board that probably would get on next month?
October 16.
Oh.
It's going to go to committee October 16.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is case number 24-16, Bartlett Automotive Mall. Are the petitioners present? Okay. Are you going to do the speaking, Aaron?
I'm happy to.
Raise your right hand. Do you soundly...
All three of us raise our right hands, just in case.
Yeah. Do you soundly affirm the evidence you're going to give tonight is only the whole truth?
I do.
Okay. Do we have the evidence, the mailings, the newspaper, picture of the sign? Mark those exhibits A, B, and C. Go ahead and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Aaron Ranky. I'm an attorney. My address is 1250 Larkin Avenue, Suite 100 in sunny Elgin, Illinois. I'm here tonight on behalf of Bartlett Automotive Mall LLC. I have with me this evening John Ebeli from the automotive mall and our landscape architect, Tim Bull. We're requesting a, a minor revision to the landscaping requirements set forth in the preliminary and final PUD as more fully set forth in our application and your packets. We're happy to answer any questions that you have.
Did you get any calls from any of the people that back up to the property?
I did not receive any phone calls.
Wow, okay. Now, this was brought on by, you ended up not needing to be, you reduced some of the space, right?
Right, and so it changes the sightlines, and I don't want to get into the, to the architectural stuff. I don't want to trespass, but it changes the sightlines and now it makes a little bit more sense to, to relocate the foliage on top of the retaining wall versus the trees that might take, you know, that will take longer to grow and achieve the desired screening effect. Is there anything you want to add to that? Okay, okay.
So the, the forsythia, then it would, is perceived would be like a fuller and the growth would be fairly fast to get to a respectable height?
Correct, correct. You're not going to necessarily have the gaps and, and first of all, there's, you know, there's the, there's the vertical issue, and then there's the horizontal issue, and then I think the forsythia is going to be more, more dense and, and be more continuous than if you had the trees. And then again, it's going to take a while for the trees to grow to sufficient height to really achieve that desired effect.
So you would be totally eliminating all the trees or you would still, okay.
Well, I have a question of staff. There was in the packet a staff-approved landscape plan. I mean, I see the original, obviously, from 2021. As a preliminary plan, there are changes made. I understand all that. Could you walk me through how this came about and when this came about and with whom this came about?
So the landscape plan I have is what was originally approved by 2021-112. So as you can see, the parking was about 35 feet from the rear, the south property line. During construction, the developer chose to reduce the size of the parking area. So it is now about 100 feet. The last row of parking and the fence is now 100 feet from the south property line. Staff has the authority to approve adding green space. So because the landscaping was staying the same and they were just adding more grass, removing pavement, staff can approve that administratively. So staff approved this plan because the landscaping was consistent with what was originally approved. Now they're coming in and they're requesting to, now that they can see what the actual grades are, they're requesting to put the forsythia shrubs along the length of the retaining wall.
On top of the wall?
On top of the wall. So if you look on here, you can see, this is the retaining wall that's built, and then there's a solid board-on-board fence back here, which also screens the parking.
So presumably with the parking farther north, right, because it's away from the retaining wall, this might have the potential for screening out headlights better at night? With the thicker forsythias? Then pine trees?
These, these are parking spaces that are typically used, I believe, for their service area. They're not, it's not customer parking back here. So I don't think headlights is...
It's for, it's for auto inventory. So there's not a lot of coming and going. You know, we keep the cars there and if we need them, we pull them out, but they're not being driven on a daily basis.
It's not a constant thing like...
Right, unless business is really good, and then, then they're going to move. But otherwise, you know, it's, it's storage, it's inventory area.
Okay.
But I do think it will screen the, the headlights when, you know, if they were to move a vehicle during the evening.
Yeah, that, I mean, that's so high and the pavement is so far down, I don't see headlights being, being the issue. But you indicated there's no trees back there at all. It's just this hedge line all the way across.
Thank you for letting me speak. If, I think I could bring a little clarity to it. So when the plan was, would have been originally approved, and I'm not sure that the elevation differences between a neighbor to the south standing in their backyard and the actual top of the parking lot of the auto mall could have been taken into consideration. So the intent was to provide a green wall or a green visual for the neighbors so that they wouldn't see into the detention area. And in the current scenario where the retaining wall, the top of the retaining wall is and the slope all the way down to the neighbor's yard, if we were to plant the, and Tim, the landscape architect, could better articulate growth rates of plants and different species of plants. But if we were to plant what's on plan, the neighbors, it would take possibly three to four years to provide that green screening. So the neighbors would continue for that period of time to see the detention area. If we elevate the plantings to the top of the retaining wall, the plants we have in mind will grow faster and they will provide that natural green fence, if you will, at a much quicker rate. So the idea was just to achieve the, achieve the intent of the plan a little bit more quickly, but, you know, achieve it fully, basically. So Tim is our landscape architect. He knows a lot more about plants than I do, and he could articulate why this plant is a great substitute for what was on the original plan. Thank you very much.
How soon would you be getting this in if this gets approved?
Sorry, sir?
How soon would you be getting the plants in if all, if all goes the way you wish?
Immediately. Christie and the Village has been great in working with us to get to this point in the process. We would start like yesterday. We're ready to go. We have all of that area to the south of the auto mall. We have all of the grass well-maintained, everything cut down, everything ready to go. The top of the retaining wall is prepped for the plants, so we would be starting immediately.
I was out there and I was on the, the street behind you and I, I just, you know, it, it needs some greenery up there and I see the potential maybe for this one looking better. You know, first when I saw it, I thought, oh, I don't like the substitute. But with everything going on, you would have a seasonal change with the different colors with the forsythia. And I'm, I'm just surprised that the neighbors aren't here. Okay, okay, they might be. So we, we need to hear from them also. But this, this does have some potential because you're in a unique situation with quite a high landscaping above their property.
It seems to me, as you've pointed out, it's drastically changed. You don't have this huge wall right there that you're trying to screen. I don't see screening as the issue personally, because that wall is so much further back. I, I see just a nice aesthetic landscape. Again, forget the screening. And maybe there's a better way to do it than just a solid hedge. You know, I like the idea of trees and height differences and, you know, something that looks more than that you're just trying to hide something. Now with that slope, you've got a lot of land there to work on that would be much more appealing, I think, that it's landscape for aesthetics rather than landscape for screening.
I'm, well, I'm not positive. I completely understand, but I guess the idea is that where the top of the retaining wall is now versus where the top of the homes to the south fences are, it's a big elevation slope up. So the only way to achieve the neighbors not being able to see the detention area is to plant a green wall of some kind. We believe we have the right, the right set of plants to do that, but certainly we're open to, you know, suggestions and if someone thinks that there's a better plant that could go there, but Mr. Ball, like I say, could articulate a little bit more on that.
Yes, I can add words to the process. Having watched plants my whole career over the last 40 years, see them grow, see what they produce. What I was looking for here when we, we talked with John is knowing that the eight-foot cedar fence that's there in the back of the properties, the slope up to the retaining wall, and then the three-foot chain link fence on the top of the retaining wall, held back about three feet. What can we do to really create something that's going to be present sooner than later? I've seen spruce and pines take six to eight years to go from an eight footer to a 12 to 14 footer. So that's a long time for people to wait to screen out that wall. Where the forsythia, I've cut it down to two feet and the next year it's a five to six foot plant when you rejuvenate it. So it's just a very particular situation that how can we create something that has good seasonal qualities to it? The spring flower, it's the first to bloom in the spring. Good foliage, good color in the fall, and a density that in the wintertime it even has an opaqueness. So it is a a singular statement, which I don't like doing traditionally, but it fits the conditions and it's going to produce and it's going to survive, which is not easy to do these days with a lot of the diseases we have with plants and losing varieties here and there. But long, long and short of it is, is what can we do to bring something in there that softens this condition now in the short term and then in the long term? Because it, it's a hardy plant that's going to be there for a long time.
Just to clarify, the forsythia would go in between the retaining wall and in front of the chain link fence, and it wouldn't grow anywhere else? It's just in front of that chain link?
Because of its habit, it'll grow by its roots. So it'll actually go through the chain link fence in the ground and come up on the other side.
Oh, okay.
Over time.
What about water? Is it a plant that needs a lot or do we maybe have a potential of, of a dying plant? On a slope that has bad...
It is a unique condition. It is behind a, a modular retaining wall. Most plant material need water to stabilize their, in, when they're getting planted and through the first season. After that, too much water will kill them. So that condition, I, I, the property does maintain their landscape, so if there's a look that something's in stress, it'll get tended to.
Okay, fair enough. And the, the area between the retaining wall and the neighbor's fences, that's owned by the petitioner, right? But, and that's where we were originally planning to plant the six to eight foot trees, evergreens?
Yes.
What's going to happen with that space? Is it empty?
That would be maintained as part of our regular landscape maintenance. So when we cut the grass at the entire perimeter of the dealership, that would also be cut and, and maintained.
Okay, thank you.
So additional, I mean, right now there's not a whole lot of grass back there in some of the spots, so that would all be seeded or sodded in that, from the neighborhood fence to your, to your wall?
Yep, that, it, it's mostly grass back there now. There's a little bit of weed, a little bit of dirt. We were waiting to get through this process before we, we seed it and blanket it to make the grass come in more green. And it's really just for the overall aesthetic and quality of the dealership. From the neighbor's yards, they would never be able to see that, that, that grass because they have six-foot fences and then by the time you look at the retaining wall, it's, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be able to be viewed, but it would still be maintained.
Very good. Anyone else? Okay, at this point, we shall open it up to the public. If you intend to speak, please fill out one of those forms and give it to staff.
John Lieberg?
Please state your name and address.
John Lieberg, 1276 High Point Court. My wife and I have lived on the street for just over four years now, and we've seen some changes made over the years. Recently, they've done a major excavation, which we got to enjoy. A lot of noise and dust all over the cars in the house. Fortunately, that part is finished. With the plans, getting rid of the trees seems like my first thoughts, a significant way to reduce the cost of the landscaping. I kind of like the idea of seeing some trees there. They don't need necessarily to have as many trees as in the initial plan. The concrete block wall, I know it's a car dealer there, but it kind of looks like it might be a prison. Doesn't look real nice there. My main concern is the space between my fence and their fences. This much grass, lots of weeds. So many weeds that spread into our backyard and I've had to pull weeds out of the grass for the better part of the last couple of years that come from there. They're noxious weeds and I would hope that part of the plan includes something not weeds. Grass, shrubs, fine. Something that, that gets mowed if it is low stuff. We're not going to be seeing it, but I don't want to have to see the effects of the noxious weeds spreading into our yard and garden. Other than that, both plans have good features to them. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Dabash Patel?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dabash Patel and I live on 1260 High Point Court, right behind the, the Genesis Link. And you can see the fence that's, that's taken from my yard. The, I, the, the main reason I'm here is to talk about the, the leftward space between the fence and the retainer wall. It was pretty much all weeds coming out of that space and it kind of like ended up on the grass that we, like especially on our backyard. The last two feet of our grass is pretty much covered in weeds right now. It got cleaned up a few weeks back, which is good, but there is absolutely no grass and I would suggest to have like trees or some kind of shrubs to take over and get planted so that we don't face the same issues again and again. And even before the construction, I know just because of the grade, there used to be taller trees, which used to retain water. When they took it off, before the construction happened, there were like a couple of days of rain when all the water like just came down and just destroyed like all the backyard, like half of the backyard. That, that got fixed, like they put like stones, like maybe a foot of stone at the end, right, after the fence. But again, like it's still, if I, if I have a picture, I, I can show like everything is coming through the fence. Like once, once those weeds starts to grow up with the rain and, and after the winter, especially in the spring and early summer, it just gets, like you can see all, all the insects and stuff just passing through the wooded fence. So I would appreciate to have it more cleaned up and plant some good shrubs and trees to fix that.
I, I believe essentially whether it's trees or forsythias, you're going to have a ground cover of the grass and so the mud problem and the weeds is going to go away, right?
Absolutely. The grass is well-maintained and I'm, I'm not even sure, were you the neighbor where I cleaned up?
It is, yeah, like we had, like we... This is before I joined the company, but when that was the old, I believe it was a RV sales location, they had some sludge that had seeped under this gentleman's fence and so, you know, we cleaned it up and proceeded to develop the auto mall. Now it's just grass that goes down there. There is no mud. So once we get through this part of the process and we enhance the current ugly grass that's there, we could seed and, and take care of it to a better extent to where it actually would just be a lawn and there would be zero potential for any mud to seep under any of those fences to the south. But, but certainly it would be something we, you know, we and our landscapers would be on the, on the lookout for at all times because I mean, it's a, the last thing we want to do is like, you know, invade somebody's yard with a little, a little bit of mud or a little bit of sludge.
Yeah, right, okay.
I think it's a great solution. I, I mean, I think it's, you know, there, it has, as Tim mentioned, the idea of just providing the green screen, green wall in a, in a quicker, prettier fashion is, I think would, should or would make everybody, you know, happy and it would achieve the original intent of the plan.
Do you think putting some trees in that space spanned out a little bit? Would that hinder the grass, mowing or maintenance or anything like that? I don't know if that may be a compromise.
Yeah, I mean, I, planting the trees in the original location would obviously make it a little bit more challenging to, to mow around all the trees and do that, but it certainly could be done. I wouldn't say, you know, we can't plant the trees because we couldn't maintain it. It would just be more challenging to to maintain it.
It looks like there's some trees in the neighbor's yards already, so I don't know if that would add a lot, but just thinking through that. Okay, thank you.
Doleon Jordan?
Good evening. I'm Doleon Jordan, 1256 High Point Court. I happen to be on the corner by Moretti's and the dealership and I've spent over $100,000 in my backyard. Thanks to the Village, I have a koi pond and as you can imagine, the koi pond, I'm outside a lot during the warmer months. It also provides a lot of appeal. It also provides a lot of appeal during the winter months, and I'm constantly looking from the upstairs window to the pond. And I'll be quite honest, the only thing I see from the upstairs window, once I look past the pond, is the fence, and I, you can see every inch of space behind the fence. So they're 100% right that when I'm in my backyard, I can't see what's going on behind the fence, other than the weeds that are coming through the fence, and there are quite a few coming through the fence. But when I'm upstairs, trying to enjoy my backyard, all I see is the brown dirt and weeds at the bottom level of the ground behind the fence. And then the level of the retaining wall with the chain link fence, to me, appears to be some form of, I don't want to call it weeds, but it feels like weeds, or maybe some, trying to be a wildflower type of...
This is the detention area. The intent of the plants that we're planting is to grow tall enough to screen the visual of the detention area. So it's an in-ground, contact, underground detention system. So the area is designed to absorb water and be in, live in like a natural state. So the best way to eliminate that would be to plant something that grows tall enough down. I don't know if we could ever, ever achieve something that you wouldn't see from the second floor, but at least it would eliminate it to a great extent. You would have a much prettier visual than just looking at the detention area.
So I guess I'm struggling with where the blades of grass are. I see the, call it the wildflower area above the retaining wall.
Above the retaining wall.
And then on the level directly below the fence, I see, since the cleanup, I see more brown, which appears to be very, very hard dirt with weeds growing out of it. I struggle to see where the grass is, and I, if I'm being honest, I've never seen anyone mowing anything, but I've not seen anything for them to mow.
Well, they spent a couple of weeks back there cleaning it up.
Well, yes, they did, and so that was a result of my wife calling the village and asking, when is the landscaping going to happen behind the dealer? Because at that point, cars were in, sales were happening, and my wife called the village, hopefully she didn't call too many times, but my wife did call the village, and after a couple of weeks of discussion, we were told that things were going to start getting cleaned up. Things got cleaned up, but we were still expecting that the landscaping would come at some time. Now, I understand that trees take time to grow. They're not going to put them in today and suddenly everything is gone, but I had the same people that put my pond in put Forsythias in my yard, and they're very pretty for about seven to 10 days, and then they're just green shrub, and they're not attractive. I'm struggling now trying to pull them out. To the gentleman's point, they figure out how to survive. So I would quite honestly prefer trees over Forsythias. I would at least love to see a decent mix of trees and Forsythias so that we get what we were expecting when you promised us beautification back there. I don't, for me, the shrubs, the Forsythia alone, don't represent beautification. Thank you.
Mike Burkhart.
My name is Mike Burkhart. I live at 1264 High Point Court, which is directly behind the dealership. Basically, what all my neighbors stated, same thing, I would like some sort of tree to just kind of cover all that stuff up, which is mainly dirt and weeds right now, and it's been like that. I haven't seen any grass there, and I feel like if you just put bushes or...
You get a little closer to them.
It's really not going to cover anything up. So I think trees, like DJ said, a mix of trees and shrubs maybe, but, and then if they could maintain it, I think it would help, but right now, it's, you know, it's weeds, like no grass, dirt. So something taller to cover the chain link, I guess, and if it takes a little time to grow, it's not a big deal, but for us to know that something's coming, I think it would help out.
Okay. Thank you. Is anyone else wanting to say anything in the audience? So it seems, a couple of things. The weeds, the mud are going to go away once something gets put in. It seems to me that people are, I like the idea of getting that screening in right away, but perhaps they're wanting a few trees here and there. Maybe not the extent of the original plan, but have them spaced more just so that there's variety. I don't know if that's possible. I don't know. What are your thoughts on the board?
Well, certainly what's between the neighbor's fence and the wall today, got pictures, I was out there today, needs a lot of work. I understand you're waiting until you get approval on what you're going to do, but everybody's been talking about that area, so that area has to be greatly improved. So that's underground, up on the hill, an underground retention area, detention area?
The area beyond the retaining wall and the short chain link fence that goes up to the actual dealer parking lot, that's the underground detention area. So that area lives in a natural state, so the idea is to block it out, and the neighbors are absolutely right. Between the retaining wall and their fence, that sloping area where the original trees were supposed to go, it is ugly, grass, dirt, not pretty at all. It can't be seen from the yard, their yards, but the gentleman is correct, it can be seen from the second floor. So we, as I mentioned, we were just waiting to get through today to not only hopefully plant the trees at the hedges at the top of the retaining wall, but then to beautify that area between the retaining wall and the fence. And just like your front lawn, if it's not in good shape, it's just going to require, you know, treatment and seeding and constant mowing and, you know, until the grass takes and is, you know, nice-looking grass, if you will, so that when they are in the second floor of the homes, that it's not a, it's not just an ugly, you know, dirty, muddy kind of grass area back there. It's not a huge area, but, you know, it is an area that should be maintained.
And the slope, that would still primarily be grass that you would cut?
The slope would be just, yeah, hopefully, we just get it to like the condition of a lawn.
Okay.
Where it's just like the rest of our dealership around the perimeter, and you're just cutting green grass. But, you know, right now, it's more, it's kind of somewhere between the original development phase and green grass. So it's not weeds, it's all cut down, you know, flat, but it's not, I'm not going to stand here and say it's pretty. I could make it pretty, we will make it pretty, but it certainly isn't today, and to the neighbor's point, I agree with them. It's got to go through a process to look nicer. So when you are looking out your second floor window, you know, you see something decent.
That makes sense. Thank you.
All of the attention has been to the south, but from the Moretti's side and that parking lot. Now granted, there's not a lot going on back there, but what's the plan for the, your east lot line in the back? It looks like the original plan had some trees. And the plan, the second plan from staff had some trees there, and there are no trees there. So there's something being done back there.
You mean if you're standing in the Moretti's lot, looking to...
The rear of the Moretti's lot, looking...
Into that sloping area?
Yes.
So they had, we actually asked Moretti's, they had overgrown weeds on their property line that were taller than me, and we asked them, can we cut your weeds down so that we could access that, that back sloping area in order to beautify it? And they were happy to cooperate with us, so we're actually, yeah, we're actually currently maintaining their jungle, if you will, that was on their, what would be their west property line, our east property line. But they're kind enough to allow us to, you know, access that area back there. I mean, theoretically, if they said, you can't come on our property, not even a foot to access it back there, it would become incredibly challenging to get back there, but they would never have any reason to do that, obviously, so it's just kind of, they're being cooperative neighbors at this point.
And again, just to clarify, that retention area, the underground area, that's just going to grow wild. Is that correct?
That would be like any detention pond, where you want the natural, whatever grows there to absorb the water, slow the process, the absorption rate of the rain down to the point where it doesn't overfill the, there's literally 10-foot in diameter, four 10-foot in diameter pipes underground that go from one end of the dealership, east end to the west end. Very big system, but it is designed for, you know, for what they call it, a 100-year event, basically, so, but you still want those things to fill up, because then you run the risk of sediment erosion and perhaps that settling a little bit. It was a very challenging thing to build in the first place, but it was really the only way to achieve detention. So you want to keep that in its natural state so it absorbs the water, and you never get in a situation where some, it becomes too wet because there's not enough to absorb the water, and it does start to drain out into the sloped area, and I've got a clean sludge up again from somebody's yard, which I don't want to do.
Okay. And lastly, so the Moretti's parking lot, there's a pavement there. I don't know where the lot line is, between your retention wall that goes north-south and the Moretti's parking lot, where that pavement ends, who owns, where's the lot line?
Moretti's. We own about a foot, I believe.
On the other side of the retention?
Of the retaining wall. So that's Moretti's property there.
But in the front, it seems you've got trees and some plantings. If you follow the sightline, that seems to be much further east than a foot.
I'm not, I'm not sure I understand. Could you?
Well, in the front of that easternmost dealership.
The front of the easternmost dealership, okay.
Okay. Where the Moretti says parking that goes east-west?
Oh, up by Lake Street?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
There are some trees there, there were some evergreens, I mean, there's some landscaping that has been done there.
No, that landscaping is all in per the original plan. The only landscaping that is not in per the original plan is this area on the south that we're talking about.
I think part of what you're asking is why was there room for it in the front, and there isn't room for it in the back?
Yes. Thank you.
That's because of the retaining wall. The retaining wall on a piece of paper, it's a real small line. In actuality, when you build it, that takes up some of the distance, and so because of the, where the retaining wall is, they have about five feet in front from the property line. As you move further south, it kind of narrows down to one foot.
So...
That's why we got rid of some of the plantings at the rear in this area, so that they would be able to have their employees or whoever's their landscapers access the back without having to encroach onto Moretti's property.
Thank you for being an interpreter, Kristy.
Yes.
Any further questions?
Yeah, I mean, Mike, I just would like to see something more than a hedge on the When the original plan, granted, it was a preliminary plan for the landscape, but when that was approved, the residents who were going to look at that had something different. Very, you know, they were going to see something very different than what is proposed now.
Absolutely, and I mean, the only reason that, the motivation for this is that the original plan would not provide that green wall, green visual, for a lot longer than what we're proposing. So we certainly could augment our proposal and still do some trees, but we're still talking about a number of years before they even have any impact whatsoever. So we almost felt like we're just planting for the sake of planting, and we're making it harder to maintain the grass area. Not impossible by any means, but it would literally at this point, for the next, say, three to five years, be planting just for the sake of planting.
Yeah, but yes and no. You look at any of the landscaping that we require in the industrial park, any new facility, I mean, you can't put in big trees, we understand that, but, you know, they will grow, and if these owners stay next year, the year after, two years after that, they're going to see the difference. So, but not putting it in, they're not going to grow at all, so...
Absolutely. We just felt like doing what we're proposing would eliminate the need for it, because you already would have the green visual. Assuming we're five years down the road, and our hedges that we want to plant are there and grown, and these trees ultimately catch up, it's more or less just green on top of green. I don't know that it's going to be prettier, maybe it would be. I can't, I can't really make a case for that one way or another. I certainly understand, though, sir, what you're saying. I guess we would have to maybe work with the village to say, okay, there were going to be X amount of trees, what could we reduce it down to, or how could we strategically place them to get maximum benefit?
If the landscape designer, do you have any comments on that?
What I do is put plants across the world, so I'm always happy to do it, but I'm also want to make a condition that's going to thrive and become something that will last I could vision shade trees back in there. There, one of the pictures that we had on the exhibit shows the one shade tree and one of the neighbors, the exhibit with the, Kristy, the hedge on it, yeah. The top right, you can see the shade tree that's visible from, I believe that's in somebody's backyard.
Yeah, that's an existing tree right on the corner.
And there's one further down to the, to the west also.
Right.
Those are the two shade trees. So scattering a few shade trees on that slope, they're going to have heads, they're going to be above the eight-foot cedar fence, but they will drop their leaves. So in the wintertime, it will change, but that's part of the beauty of Chicago and the landscapes we have. The evergreen trees is what I was concerned about in terms of being so dense that they're going to grow into each other and grow out, shade each other out. Over the long term, in the short term, they're just going to be points that are about six and a half feet apart and do nothing to screen what's there. Over time, they'll have a dense greenery, and then that dense greenery will fade away, and they have to start over again. I don't like starting landscapes over again. I like them to mature and become something powerful. So, does that help?
Yeah, that helps. I mean, I, I thought maybe the original plan had too much, the way it looked, but now there isn't enough, in my opinion. So what I would like to see is for you to get with staff and come to some understanding. The gentleman?
Could you come up to the microphone? Come up to the microphone, please? And state your name again, because they have to transcribe it to a print form.
John Lieberg, again. I would suggest fewer trees, but more mature trees, and a mix of deciduous and coniferous.
More mature?
Older, taller, to start with. Rather than waiting three years to see anything above the fence, see them right away.
The problem, if you have a lot of deciduous trees there, you're going to get more leaf trouble from the north and the west winds blowing down on you.
That's the mix.
Anyone else?
For the sake of trying to keep things moving forward, could we, could you estimate, like, is two trees behind each residential lot, is that something that would space, be spaced out, a mixture of evergreens and deciduous? So there's one, two, three, four, five, six and a half lots. Do you think you could say, we'll do 13 trees back there, a mixture of deciduous and evergreen? a mixture of deciduous and evergreens, make sure there's two behind each lot? That would be, is that something that would be a reasonable compromise that we could make as a condition? So we could keep this project moving forward?
I'm actually fine with it. As long as you can make a recommendation on preservation, being ready to, though, that's okay.
The original plan had 38.
I'm talking about 13. So it'd be about two, it'd be, yeah, it'd be about a third of what was originally there. There'd be about two trees behind each residence lot, so we could do a mixture of evergreens and deciduous. We'll let you choose. I just want to be able to have a condition that's pretty firm.
Right, and a good variety.
It makes me think it's a little harder, but if that makes everybody happy, I mean, we're certainly, you know, like we say, the idea is to provide a green space. The alternative would be at the top of that detention area, that's no plant anything, put another, the prettiest six-foot wooden fence you could find, then you would never see the contention area. And you wouldn't have to worry about growth, that would accomplish the lack of seeing that contention area overnight. You wouldn't be waiting for anything to grow. But the neighbors would rather see a, a nice-looking wooden fence that's going to be permanent, or would they rather be a little bit patient and wait for green to hopefully get six feet tall someday and see that? Because the whole idea really is create the detention area. I mean, the sloping area will definitely come in as nice green grass by mid next summer. But that, even when that's beautiful, that, that was golf course style grass, that's still not going to, from that scene, the contention area must be come up with a plan that plants something at the top of that retaining wall, which is what we're asking for. But if there's a compromise, say, just put some trees in that sloping area, that would be ideal.
Are you saying if you put in trees in the sloping area, you're not going to do the forsythias?
Well, how long before they would retain, because the, the retaining area, Kristy, at the top of their retaining wall is probably about eight feet above where the neighbor's fence starts. So it would take a number of years. It would take, I don't know how many years to manufacture a wood plant to even get as tall as the retaining wall.
I just want to make sure we're all on the same page about what we're discussing.
Yeah, two different areas. One screening, one area, and one is sprucing up, beautifying. So if they look out the back door, they, or their second floor, I mean, I, everybody who spoke, I believe, were more, more concerned with that lower area. Or maybe that's because with the, the plantings up along the fence, they're not worried about that, but they, is anybody else, I mean, do you want to add anything to help us?
Well, it, certainly having the variety in there would give you better sight, and it would be more environmentally friendly than having an eight-foot beautiful fence, which isn't going to do anything with the environment. Whereas, you know, having plantings all over, and by having a variety, you're, you're protecting yourself better in case all of a sudden there's a blight, like years ago, the Dutch elm disease, where all of a sudden, everything, all the elm trees went, and there was nothing to take their place. And at least this way, you would have a variety, and not everything's going to die out at the same time, if there's some type of blight.
I, I mean, well, first, we're open to compromise, so it would rather be 13, is what you said?
Yeah.
13 seem reasonable?
I think, had a, did you have a comment? Did you want to speak? Come on up.
So Leon Jordan, 1260 High Point Court. I mean, 13 is better than zero, right? So there were quite a few trees there when the homes were built. Most of those got knocked down within our yards. There were quite a few trees that remained on the backside of the fence. And outside of the one that keeps showing in that picture, which is actually outside of our yard, that, yes, it is outside of the yard. Outside of that one, until you look, I don't know how many houses down that next one was, there, there's effectively no trees back there any longer. And so it looked like the proposal had a mix of shade trees and some evergreens. I would like to see a mix of shade trees and evergreens, if forsythias make sense on the upper level. I'm, I mean, I'm personally okay with that, if you can't get any trees up there. But again, beautification is the key thing that I remember, my wife was not thrilled. She came when you initially were talking about building out the space, and she was not thrilled with the plans for the back area, discussions around the fence, are we going to do wood fence, chain leak fence, and different things. So ultimately, and I get it, it's not our decision, at the end of the day, the village can make whatever decision you want, but we, we kind of went into a level of compromise, and the expectation was that we would have the beautification. And so for, for me, that's key, because if you don't do it, then I have to figure out, how much more money do I spend in my own yard and wait for those trees to grow?
Well, beautification is a, a key factor, and I'm impressed that everybody has spoken very kindly tonight without getting excited and, and getting into arguments and threatening and stuff like that. I think certainly this is, this is the chance to come up with a, a good compromise, and I think what you've discussed with Kristy would probably do it. Aaron, does this seem reasonable?
Absolutely. So you got to put a point on that, I'm going to, he's very, we're going to make it absolutely beautiful, Patrick.
All right. Thank you.
So we'll stay with the forsythias at the top?
With the forsythias at the top.
Like the 13?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just confirming the, the discussion. So we'll stick with the forsythia on the top of the wall, and then the 13 trees, did you say 13?
13.
13, and so that's two behind every lot?
Right.
Okay. And then we'll come up with a plan in coordination with the staff about what kind, where, and all that other kind of stuff? And everybody realizes it may take a few years before those trees are what we would, you know, what we would want them to be?
It's definitely going to take some time. Once again, the original motivation was eliminate the issue. I plan the, how do you say it, forsythia? Fors- forsythia. Definitely on the bottom of the station. Plant that on top of the wall to be, to minimize, minimizing-
Right.
Detention area, so.
And I think that was a good proposal, you know, overall, seeing that.
Sounds like a reasonable compromise, and we can work that out in relatively short order.
Okay. I like that.
Thank you very much.
Everybody pretty much is on board? Any recommendations, any motions?
I can make a motion.
To quote Aaron?[1584.83][1584.83][laughing] Aaron was our motioner.[1588.33][1588.33][laughing]
Sorry.
It was good.
Old habits die hard.
Okay. Pass on a positive recommendation to the village board on case 24-16 Bartlett Automotive Mall, based on the findings of fact and the additional requirements of, findings of fact and the memo from staff with the additional requirements, to keep the forsythias on the top and add 13, 13 trees on the sloping land between the wall and the neigh- and the neighborhood fence. 13 trees, a combination of deciduous and evergreens, to be worked out with the landscape designer and the village staff.
I like that. Everybody's on board with that? Okay, we have a motion on the floor at this point. I shall close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Bob and seconded by John. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Julie Kapitakakis?
Yes.
Amy McSwain?
Yes.
John Baderman?
Yes.
Bob Picaro?
Yes.
Tom Miaso?
Yes.
Mike Wharton?
Yes. Okay, we shall pass on a positive recommendation to the board. Thank you for all your input, your comments, your understanding. I was very impressed with this hearing. It went well.
Thank you for having us. We appreciate it. Thank you, Kristy, the village department. You guys have been very patient with us. Thank you, neighbors. I will leave you my email address, so if you ever need anything, just email me, and I'll make sure to get on there and you'll be right out. Thank you, folks.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any new business, old business?
I do not believe we're going to have a meeting next month.
Okay.
December, you probably will, so I apologize in advance.[1719.33][1719.33][laughing]
Any motions to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved by John, second?
Second.
Second by John Baderman. All in favor?
Aye.
Hi, Kristy, nice to meet you. Oh, can you give that to him? My son has, is waiting in my office. I took him to hockey.
Oh.[1772.01][1772.01][laughing] You got to give us the signal, Kristy, next time. It's hockey practice tonight.
All right, thank you everyone for coming.
Bye, Kristy.
Really, really glad.
Good job.
Hi, I'm Andrew, one of the planners.
Nice to meet you.
Hi, Brian.
Nice to meet you.
Glad to be joining us.